Six o'clock. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three revised order suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law. GL Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen, meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and in through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Agenda items listed are those recently anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the step committed by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB School Committee Recorder, Virchard Ed, Virchard Eagle. We have roll call votes. We have a couple of members on line. Roll call, Allison Reed.
Yeah, here.
Jason St. Peter, here. Bill Voight.
Here.
Andy Potter.
Here.
Bill Fields.
Here.
Thank you, Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Here.
Rich.
Here.
And Steve Bannon, here. Minutes, we have the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Make a motion to approve minutes of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, Steve.
Yes, I could.
Correction.
Yes.
I'm showing was absent. I wasn't. Okay, and I couldn't because I seconded several motions during the meeting.
And interestingly, I was absent and I'm not. So I think because we're both so stunningly handsome, people accuse us maybe, Bill, is that?
No, no, actually, Bill, both here and not here.
Yeah.
To mark R. D'Amone as absent and to mark William Voight as president.
Go in the second one.
Second.
Okay, so this is two votes. Um, the amended part of the minutes, Allison.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Andy.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I. Now on the minutes, Allison. The amended minutes.
Yes.
Yes. Andy.
Aye.
Bill, yes, Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I. Minutes passed unanimously, right after the superintendent's report. Okay, we're gonna start with the roses and the thorns. Uh, while I get, set it up, Cynthia, come on down, uh, and, and then Jake and, and then Ariel and, and also Peter, when I get to Peter, I'll introduce him again uh, to, to the group, and then after they share their roses and thorns, uh, as for additional, uh, this information that I'll share unless they address it first. Uh, so, um, hi Cynthia, how, how are things at Muddy Brook?
Hi, things at Muddy Brook are really great. Um, they're really great. Uh, a couple of things, it seems like we haven't met in a long time, and my memory doesn't seem to be kicking back into twenty twenty-four, so I'm just gonna talk about what's happened since the beginning of this new year. Um, last night we had the fourth grade band and orchestra concert, which is wonderful, and it's great to see, um, kids learning instruments. Um, yesterday we had a wonderful professional development, uh, program for our teaching staff that was on high-impact teaching strategies, which was also great, and our paraprofessionals were, um, with the rest of the paraprofessionals in the district, and they were having professional development around de-escalation, um, strategies for students. We also just finished our benchmarking period for our students. We got together a really nice, um, full benchmark team, and so it only took our school uh, a week from the eighth to the fifteenth to benchmark the three hundred and sixty-eight students in our school, um, in both ELA and MAC. Um, and now we're just starting to do data meetings with all the grade levels, which is super awesome. And, um, the other thing that we did when we got back from break was a rolling assembly. So the, um, Assistant Principal and I, Betsy DiAgostino, went to each grade level for two days, and we reminded our students about the Muddy Brook expectations, and then we specifically focused on what those expectations look like in the hallway and in the stairwell. Um, and we gave out our high-five tickets for kids that were following those expectations that were a golden ticket, and it was worth two high-five tickets instead of just one, so they could cash them in at the end of the month to buy trinkets and stuff at the school store. So we hit a great start to a new year, and, um, the teachers all really, and paraprofessionals all re, really, um, appreciated the reinforcement of the skills we expect to see. And I always forget to think of the thorn, so that's my thorns.
Great, all right, thank you. And Jake.
I always write the thorns first. Good evening, everyone. I forget my voices. I, I, like, this, at this point last week, I could barely talk, which was, like, my wife and daughter, who's home from college, and their dream come true. I think I'm almost back to full steam. Um, thank you for the opportunity to share this. Um, Roses, congratulations to our band orchestra and chorus students. We had our winter concert, uh, last week on January eighth, and the, the numbers of our young musicians, uh, are really strong. Um, it, it says only good things as they progress through DuBois up to Monument. Um, the numbers are really good and really strong, and their work ethic is really strong. It's as strong as their numbers and their dedication to their art, and, uh, it's, it's great things now and really great things to come as these students, uh, age through the, the district's program. Um, our eighth-grade raffle results, I don't know if any of you got hit up by any eighth graders over the past few weeks, but, uh, the raffle was over. Our students collectively sold four hundred and seventy tickets and raised just over ten thousand dollars, um, with this raffle. Many students worked really hard. They reached out to local businesses. Um, students are starting their own fundraisers, selling carnals, and working on social media to sell, um, these raffle tickets. And, uh, we're about halfway to our goal of what we want to raise to make sure that every single student, that money is not a barrier for anybody going on the Philadelphia field trip at the end of the year. And, uh, super, super thanks to, uh, New Boston Crane, uh, and Sled, which is on Route Eight in Sandusfield. Um, they're DuBois family, and they donated the items that were in the raffle that raised ten thousand dollars, and it was just an incredibly generous, uh, an incredibly generous move and, and really helpful in helping, uh, the eighth-grade team work through how to run a raffle of this magnitude, and we're very grateful to them and to Hattie White, their owner. Our eighth-grade students, the teachers report, we're really getting, so our eighth graders are reading The Outsiders in ELA. It's kind of nice. It's a piece of literature that kind of links those of us that are not eighth graders with the eighth graders, because many of us studied it too. Um, and it's, it's proven pretty popular. Very grateful to Amy Taylor for bringing that into the curriculum and making it work. Um, over the past few weeks, they've been doing, very crew, a student-led staged reading and a theater adaptation, and it's been really fun to go up and see the students take, take a hand in acting. Um, tends to be the non-actory students, and one end they even sang a song, uh, as a part of it, and it was really good. So well done to them. We are very excited, very grateful. Our eighth graders on Tuesday are going to see the two thousand and fourteen film Selma at the, uh, Triplex, and, um, Colin Sheever really organized this and got it going, so thank you Colin for making that happen for us. Uh, and, and along with Shirley Edgerton, who's been a, a long time, uh, friend and colleague of mine from, from Pittsfield, and a, and a friend to kids throughout the county, and, uh, to, thank you to, to Shirley and to Colin and to our neighbors down at the Triplex for making it happen. It's really gonna be, uh, a powerful experience for our students. And our seventh-grade team reported that our seventh graders have come in ready to learn and have continued to show eagerness, the same eagerness they had in the beginning of the year, they still have in January, which is that, you know, one of the things we talk about is staying power. Everybody starts strong, but can you be strong in the middle, and can you finish strong? And our seventh graders are working on it. Um, students are willing to revise their writing. They ask good questions in class. They're inquisitive. They're proud of their hard work, and they are tolerant and accepting of one another, and that's, uh, that's really high praise for, for a group of, uh, twelve-year-olds. Thorns, um, student attendance continues to be a real challenge for us at DuBois. I have a, a suspicion that, um, all three of the schools in the district are looking at student attendance as we approach mid-year, and, um, so we, we are doing several different layers of things, reaching out to, to, to students and their families and working to just really engage, to get families to understand that what feels like a very occasional absence, you put a dozen of those very occasional absences together and you've missed a dozen days, which is a pretty good percentage of the school year. Um, it has not helped that this year there seem to be a wide variety of funky sicknesses going around that probably have impacted everybody in the room and around the tables, so we're, we're, we understand that, but we're gonna work on what we can work on. Um, field trips, the, the eighth-grade team particularly, that have kind of the big, um, uh, capstone field trip for our students at DuBois are really concerned about, uh, money getting tighter, you know, from a budgetary standpoint and understanding that all of our families are up against, um, increased financial stressors at home. And so we're, we're really trying to think hard and be creative about how can we do fundraising, how can those of us who, who can help out, help out a little bit more to make sure that no student misses out on a pretty powerful learning experience because of finances. Um, we, we clearly, uh, have to, have to name a name. Kristy McLaughlin, who is a eighth-grade science teacher, has, has really taken on the, is holding the reins of the fundraising, just a lot of energy, a lot of creativity. Um, Erica Jake, who's a mom, has been, uh, wonderful at helping us out, and there have been several parents, um, and really some very, very giving families, but, but we're really trying to think through, uh, is the scale of the Philadelphia trip sustainable, you know, moving into what I think across the Commonwealth and likely the country is going to be really challenging budgetary times? So more on that later. Um, the seventh-grade team is, is reporting they're a little frustrated at lacking detail about this year's student-led conferences. Most of you that are middle school parents will know what those are, uh, and they also report sort of a general, just feeling like our leadership teams around the building are slightly disjointed. Um, I have to, I have to own both of those frustrations, and I assume if our seventh-grade team is feeling them, all four of our grade-level teams are feeling them, I have to own both of them. Um, uh, yeah, I, I have had some distractions and maybe had my eye off the ball a little bit as we went through November and December, and, um, the concerns are legitimate and they're fair, and I've had many conversations with, with our team about them. Um, I, I, I think some of my distractions, Peter may clarify here later this evening, but, um, I, I think we're really re-centered and refocused and ready to move forward. The, uh, the clarity around the, um, student-led conferences, we took care of using our PP time yesterday, so we're good to go. Um, our leadership teams, we're, we're, I think, refocused and re-centered and, and moving forward in unison again. But appreciate the seventh grade for being, um, uh, you know, just really good partners and being willing to say the things that they know need to be said, but, but that aren't always easy to hear as a leader, and, uh, I appreciate their candor and, and that, because that allows us to move forward. So that's it for DuBois.
Great.
Thanks, thank you.
Uh, and so Ariel, we'll start with you and then with Mr. Lurgio. Sure.
And, yeah, thank you. Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Um, sorry, my roses. Tonight is our advanced drama play, so I'm very excited and looking forward to going to that after this.
What is it?
Advanced drama. I don't know what the play is, but I do know that this is.
It's a drama.
Yes.
The class is advanced drama.
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Um, in terms of our sports, we're doing actually really well this winter season. Um, our swim team had a recent win against Lakona and just won against the Levon, Levon, with a score of one eighteen, went, uh, forty-five, taking first in nine of our eleven races. Wrestling is doing really well with Sam St. Peter, John Frank, and Mason St. Peter, all placing third, being most recent tournament. And what we're really happy and proud of is having a few athletes from our middle school coming and collaborating with the wrestling team up at the high school. Um, for skiing, uh, Monmouth's hopice users are doing really great. Um, in a race earlier in the week, kids in Stover brought me one to first place, and second, her boys. And in third place, our, our girls team, uh, was claimed by Grace Sohn. For our basketball team, we're doing really good in the season. Um, so far we have a score of nine to one, and our recent win against Porter Town ended with a score of eight to sixty-five. Our girls team is really doing amazing work and is training alongside our new coaching staff. A really big point for mine and the general is that we have done three new members into the Monmouth's Athletic Hall of Fame. This is Lily Haskins Wong, Lily Haskins Wong, who holds the state for, the state record for the girls high jump at five minutes to two minutes. Immediate dislets. Who holds the state record for girls with a two-mile time of eleven minutes and fourteen seconds. And Erica Checo leads the D-three boys state cross country champion with a time of sixteen minutes and nine seconds. However, I did, it was informed, that's not his fastest time. His actual PR is fifty minutes and twenty-nine seconds, so some crazy apples. In terms of our student line, just yesterday at our half-day, we had a prep sale for the French exchange students to try and raise money, and we did really good, raising three hundred dollars, which is much more than we expected, because we didn't leave the class, leaving the school, just trying to get us anything started, but really been happy with it. Going to our thorns, we actually had a tough time reading of thorns, which I'm pretty happy about, but there was one big thing that, uh, did happen, and we had a recent incident. It surprised the school. There was what I would call a tussle between a few students in the hallway, and, uh, from what I understand, it did get pretty violent, yelling and some shoving, but we knew that administration was handling the matter, and we just hope that we can keep the school safe and for everybody.
One thing I'll add, uh, the, the name of the play is Turn of the Screw, and it says seven tonight, and it might be done in time, if anybody wants to go, or seven tomorrow.
Yeah.
And it's a psychological, uh, a psychological horror. Wow. Okay, uh, Pete Lurgio's here. Uh, Mr. Lurgio's is one of our two assistant principals at the, at the high school, and, uh, he has some other things to share. It's just good for everybody to get to know him.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Um, thank you for being welcome back. Um, I, um, as we were putting the thorns and, and roses together, uh, I was thinking of a couple of things in addition, and actually Jake made me think of attendance also. We, um, I, I, our rough percentage is higher than it was last year at this time, and so, uh, Mr. Brown and I are gonna make some changes. The counselors and I are gonna make some changes, uh, in terms of just more, more face time. It's easy to send a letter home. It's, uh, it's probably more effective when you, you sit down with the student or with the parents and ask what's going on and how we can help. On the roses side, um, we also, you know, there was the district PD day yesterday, and, um, i- if you folks were to walk around, I think you'd be amazed at the horsepower that's being put out by, by our staff. Um, yesterday we were talking, and Mr. Barnes will probably talk about it in future meetings, talking about, uh, uh, focusing our, our honors distinction, uh, assessments, and I know that you folks have had concerns about it, and he's been addressing it, and we've been having conversations about it. Uh, so staff yesterday were, um, were discussing what they're using to assess at honors level distinction, and, um, and we're making headway with that. On the thorn side, whenever somebody talks about a, a, a tussle, as they would call it, um, I feel like all arrows were pointed at the assistant principal, and, and.
No one was thinking that.
We just avoided security.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, um, and, and, uh, yeah, we, uh, Mr. Brown and I, we had, we had four very, uh, difficult media issues today with the number of different kids, and, um, and, and, uh, they were, I, I am superstitious. I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say they were very effective, um, and I hope that doesn't jinx me, but, um, it was, it was challenging kids doing very difficult work, um, and being honest with somebody that they may not have a lot in common with. Uh, but, but, uh, we have faith that, uh, that moves things forward.
Very good.
Thanks, Bob.
Again, um, and just a little behind-the-scenes thing, like, we talked about this and, and collectively decided it's, it's important to share uh, the hard news as well as the good news, and it keeps us honest, and it helps us grow as a community, so that's what we did there. I've got, uh, 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 three really good things to share, and one that's sort of interesting. Uh, and, and we'll, we'll actually get this person in, you, you've seen this, but, um, Elsa Hernandez, one of our science teachers at the high school, won the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. That's a really big deal. Uh, in the, the history of that award, only two people have ever won it in Berkshire County. Uh, the, the last person, who's also one of our teachers, Kathy Erickson, uh, and she won it in two thousand and eleven. Uh, so, a- and I was looking at a map, I was gonna say, like, only two people have ever won it west of the, uh, Connecticut River, but it's not quite true, like, somebody in Westfield won it, but, but it is fair to say only two people in Berkshire County won it, so, so that's a really big deal. We're excited for her. She gets to go down to the, uh, White House at some time for a, a big celebration, among others things. So we'll get her in it and we'll celebrate her. Um, my next news, and, and I'm, uh, equally excited about this, is, um, um, that, uh, Jake McCandless and I have agreed to extend his contract, uh, for three more years, so, uh, he's gonna be with us through at least June two thousand and twenty-eight. Uh, that's a huge deal for him, so. And for us, right? I mean, it's really, it's stability in the school. It's, it's a, it's a seasoned, uh, hand on the tiller. Uh, it, it's, it's somebody who, who brings the best out in students and staff alike. Uh, really excited about it. Um, my next one, this is like cocaine news. Uh, there's a big article in, in, uh, Ego about what Lennox did with their, uh, uh, professional development days going into Thanksgiving break, and, and they figured out a way, yeah, totally replicated, but, but I'm gonna try, or I'm gonna supposedly pilot part of it. So going into Thanksgiving break, they wiggled their calendar around, so the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving break would be entirely for professional development, and they didn't have kids come into school on either of those days. What they gave up for that, and it went along, conversation and looked at it, were, uh, some of their days at the beginning of school, which I don't think we're, like, right before school starts, which I don't think we're willing to give up. That's really part of our culture. But I think we can split the difference for next year, and I'll come back to a future meeting with a, the full calendar. I just wanted to preview it. Uh, typically we have four professional development days, so, uh, two in August before school starts, one on Election Day, which our people really like, and then one in, in March. Um, Lennox doesn't participate in the whole, uh, Election Day professional development, but we do. So what I'd like us, or I'm gonna propose at our next meeting, is that, that we move our March Day to the Tuesday before, uh, Thanksgiving, and I'm gonna do a little data analysis around, are we gonna, is nobody gonna come to school on Monday or not, or was Monday attendance already weak? And for next year, I propose that we use that Tuesday as a professional development day and, and do away with the March professional development day uh, and see how it goes, and, and then I'll come back. It's just, I'm thinking out of, I've been doing some research on it. The union's interested and supportive of it, uh, and it may work well, uh, particularly for families who, who are still traveling on that Tuesday anyway. And so I'll come back on that. Um, the, the last thing I, I'm gonna just share, and, and it's very early, and I, I share this carefully, uh, and not to put pressure on anybody, but I was looking at some of what's going on with the high school, uh, in terms of, um, college acceptances and, and early decision, uh, and in, in the senior class already, uh, sixteen, uh, students, more than twelve percent of that class, uh, have been admitted to a really interesting and wide range of colleges, uh, early decision. Uh, I don't know that we've ever had that many students be accepted early decision, and, and the, and the range of colleges is remarkable, and, and in the future, we'll, we'll tell stories about all of them, but, but, um, um, it, it's really neat, and, and the work connects uh, to all sorts of other work we're doing, including internships. So, uh, a, a student who, who did, did a lot of work in psychology and had some rich internships is going to Yale. A, another student who did some work in PR and, and journalism, uh, is, is going to Columbia. Two students are going to Middlebury, uh, one, uh, went to Tufts, one to Vassar. A, a student who did an internship with the police department who's interested in studying criminal justice is going to Westfield State uh, to do that. And another student who's interested in business is going to the University of Monaco, and he needed to know it was the University of Monaco, and, and, and we all looked at it, and we went to the University of Monaco. Like, how, how great is that? Uh, a- and, uh, another to Northeastern, um, uh, Boston College, uh, UMass Boston, on and on and on, right? So I, I, I almost certainly missed one or two. That's a, that's an oversight. Oh, one to Tufts, uh, as well, and, and not intentional. Uh, but, but we'll share some more updates on that, but, but, as I started talking to the guidance counselors around how they supported students around this, it was much more than essays and recommendations. It was years of thoughtful planning and students taking advantage of, uh, uh, independent studies and really rich, uh, internships. Uh, and the bigger context is it's really hard to get into college right now, right? So those kind of results in an increasingly complex uh, admissions cycle and environment is, is really remarkable, so hats off to, to them and the teachers that supported them, and obviously it's a whole family game, right, and all the parents and all, oh, what they did, oh, one other one. Um, uh, as, as students go to Holy Cross, uh, through a really neat program called Quest Bridge, which is also, also remarkable. And, and the other thing I should mention for all of these is that in many cases, uh, not only did they get into really interesting places, but they got into really interesting places with, uh, with quite significant financial aid packages, uh, which, which makes it reasonable. Uh, one last one, uh, um, because we value the arts and music so much, uh, and, and other students going to do one, uh, the Berklee School of Music uh, for, for guitar performance, also with significant support. So it's really, really neat and, and really, uh, proud of them and proud to be, like, leading a district where, where we're doing that so well. Uh, so those are my, uh, my four things. Um, who, I'd like to, oh, I don't think, we don't have any fan approvals this week, right? Okay, uh, so I'd like to give just a little update on, on the budget process, and then we get to the finance subcommittee, which may add some more. Uh, we're deep in our budget process, and we'll be sharing updates at our, our future school committee meetings. Uh, as many of you know, and many of you have been attending these meetings, uh, we really started in August, and, and we're working through a, a range of multiple scenarios. Uh, we're waiting on a couple outstanding variables. Uh, one's local and then one's at the state level. The state one is, there's complex fargo of the minimum local contribution, um, and, and that is applied to our overall assessment, uh, and it, it drives, uh, in part what each TAM contributes, right? So, so we're waiting to hear that. Uh, we're also waiting on the, the, uh, to hear the increase to our health insurance. Both of those things are significant variables. Um, that'll um, i- impact our budget and um, um, we're gonna review this with, with the finance subcommittee at, at the upcoming meeting on, on the thirtieth. And we might even, if we feel we need to schedule another meeting. Um, we're going into what everybody's saying is a very tough budget cycle. Uh, I encourage you all to read or to subscribe to the MAS, the superintendent's. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, the MASC, the school committee's uh, news clips. Uh, and if you see that, you can sort of see where the tea leaves are going. Uh, and, and we're not alone in this. I think every. Uh, or almost every district in, in the Commonwealth that is going into, into what could be a, a very tough budget cycle. Uh, there are increasing costs in many areas. Uh, the, the most obvious is salaries. Uh, but also insurance, utilities and transportation. And, and we get reimbursed for some of our transportation, which mitigates some of those increases. But we don't get reimbursed for all our transportation. Uh, and, and some of our most expensive transportation, we don't get reimbursed at all for. Uh, we're working really hard to, to do what we always try to do, which is balance the educational needs of our students and the tight fiscal realities. Uh, of our three towns. Um, and, and as always, we're cognizant of the impact of our budget. Um, on our member towns. Uh, and, and this year maybe more than ever, we're even more cognizant of it as, as we. Um, will have a, a high school vote in, in October or, or not in Alabama, right? So that, that's our home too. But, but that's where we are with, with the budget process. We, we'll be sharing um, um, updates regularly and checking in some more. Um, the next thing on our agenda and I'll, I'll hand it over to you, Andy, if you're okay with this, is uh, sharing your statement. Um, honoring the legacy of President Carter.
Yeah, I was just, uh, been over this last month, uh, reflecting on the life of the minister and particularly the administration of Jimmy Carter. For a president I never voted for. But, um, and then in particular areas where he had an impact on. Work that's interesting. Of interest to me, in particular, in this case, education. So I have a statement I'd like to give to the record. Uh, last week, the nation observed a morning President Jimmy Carter reflecting on his extraordinary legacy of compassion, integrity and service. As we gather today, it's fitting to acknowledge his significant contributions to education, the cause he championed throughout his life. During his presidency, President Carter prioritized education as a national imperative, culminating in the creation of the U.S. Department of Education in nineteen seventy-nine. This landmark achievement underscored his commitment to ensuring equitable access to quality education for every American. His efforts laid the foundation for countless advancements in supporting teachers, students in schools, shaping the future of learning in this country. As we reflect on his lasting impact, let us be inspired by President Carter's belief in education as a pathway to equity and opportunity. May his legacy guide us in fostering learning environments that uplift all members of our community.
Hold on. So requests for approval. Uh, so in your packet are um, uh, three. Two or. Overnight trips for, um, for the wrestling team, um, first the state tournament, then, then the all-state tournament. And then the D three swimming state tournament. They're, they're all over a few, a few days. So, um, we're asking your, uh, your approval. For this. Uh, we, we're at, people haven't, some of the swimmers have qualified already, but the wrestlers don't know that they've qualified till deeper in the.
Is it bad luck to vote on this right now?
In the, in the season. One, and, and you can vote on the swimming and not on the wrestling, but we wanted to get it to, like, we're trying to be organized and get you stuff in the thirty-day thing. Uh, so we, you might want to frame a creative motion that, that doesn't jinx them, but, but let's just move ahead.
I, we can vote on this as a package.
Yeah.
I make a motion and we approve the overnight trips for athletics as written. Second, second. Sorry, motion and a second. And, and I do want to acknowledge the fact, one, our progress, but also. We're finally organized enough not to have a phone call on a Friday, saying that they're leaving Monday.
What are we back?
Can we just do that?
That deserves as much celebration as the, uh, that's the wins.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call Allison.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Bill.
I'm sure you can spot it.
Oh, I'm sure it was. Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Uh, we don't allow proxy votes, so I'm sure he wants it.
Um, the next one, we, we, we hold a, a, a spot for DEIB updates. Uh, as I've talked before, we've been doing work with the Department of Justice Spirit Program. Uh, and outcome of that is, uh, they're gonna share a report with Jake and I that we're largely gonna use it at the building level. Uh, and, and then, and then we'll, we'll, uh, share some leanings or learnings from that more broadly. Uh, we didn't yet receive the report. We expect to receive it uh, in, in the near future. And when we do, we'll, we'll share some information. Uh, and, and Jake already talked about the, the Selma experience and the, and the talk back around that. So that, that's another step we're quite excited for.
Thank you. Um, subcommittee reports. Can you see if we hit a policy date? I don't think we've done that yet.
Yes.
Uh, buildings and grounds. Superintendents' valuations. Richard, anything?
Nothing on the past meeting, Peter, gift update, but as I said, we're meeting before, um, uh. The regular meeting on the thirtieth, it'll probably be the most consequential finance committee meeting of the year. So if people want to attend, it, it would be a good one. Um, as Peter said, we'll get the final numbers there and um, I think the, the, the thought at this point is there's gonna be a lot of work to do after we get the final numbers. Um, to get to a budget. That's something that the administration is gonna be comfortable presenting to us on the thirteenth. And I think we may end up having another finance committee meeting between that meeting and the thirteenth, um, to really flush things up. And, and make some decisions.
Correct. Uh, negotiations, obviously. It's not that, if you wanna discuss personnel and significant retirements.
Yeah, uh, and then the other one is, is I'll work with Bill to schedule a superintendent's evaluation and advisory meeting too. Um, so, um, a, a, a couple things on the, on the personnel report, uh, three retirements. I consider all these three people to be. Uh, wonderful colleagues and, and, and trusted teachers in one case, a counselor. Uh, and, and their shoes will be really tough to fill. So.
Kind of an error, I'm impressed.
Uh, so Neil Weber, longstanding art teacher at the high school, is announced he's retiring. Uh, Dom's. Um, adjustment counselor at the middle school is announced he's retiring. And Tom Roy, longstanding technology teacher at, at the high school, that is also announced he's retiring. So, uh, three quite significant, uh, folks. Um, there, there's an interesting clause in the contract that, that lets people. Um, uh, get a, a, a little incentive if they announce to me early that they're retiring. And I shared that with people and. And um, I, I'm gonna, and I'll send a formal email to staff about this, uh, but I'm gonna extend that deadline. Uh, to the twenty-ninth of, of January. So almost two additional weeks. Uh, in case anybody else is, is interested in exercising that option. We're sort of alluding to the fact that this will be a, a tough budget cycle we're going into. Uh, and, and I'm extending that, uh, because, uh, this could help us through.
It's very important, yes. It's a very nice final act of service for the board, giving the district to, to do that.
Yeah. Um, so, um. Yes, I think, I think that's it on, on my end. So, MSBA update. Jay, do you wanna do that or?
Well, sure. I, I'm not sure. I mean, at the last meeting, we talked about, um, you know, which, um. Final solution we chose. Our next meeting is Wednesday and our next big discussion is um, heating and, and um, cooling system. Um, you know, ground source heat pumps versus something called BRF and we're, uh, in the process of drilling test wells for the ground source heat pump. We'll know a lot more on the possibilities, the costs. Um, we should have the information by next Wednesday, but that'll be one of the main discussions, uh, going forward. And then just the process itself has been ramping up and speeding up and hopefully we get in instead of, um, designs with no windows and just kind of Lego walls. Windows, lighting and see what it's really gonna look like. So I'm excited for what the architect will make forward.
With Legos, could you?
What's the last thing you bought, Lego?
When we get to public comment, uh, uh, Eric and Angel and their collective hand raised.
Yeah, I'm not there yet.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else on the MSBA process? Any, is this? Seeing none, let's go to the public comment. Just to, yeah.
Guys, thank you. It's actually just Erica this time, but um. I have raised my hand with the DEIB. This is fine as a public comment. Um. Is Christopher Barnes there tonight?
Uh, no, he's not. He, he, like Peter was here. He's a personal thing. That's.
Got you, got you. So we, um, we've been meeting with him as part of the school advisory council and he, um. Has been attending, um, part of the Berkshire Alliance to Support Immigrant, uh, Community, BASIC, which is meeting regularly in Pittsfield. Uh, my understanding is that, um, Christopher Barnes is one of the people that's on a subcommittee, um, that's working on procedures and policies around. Ensuring that. Organizations, including schools, have clear guidelines for, um. Any potential shifts that might be coming with a new administration next week, uh, presidential administration. And I guess. First, I just wanna, wanted to thank him on the meeting and publicly thank him for those efforts. Um. And what I'm hoping for to raise awareness about at this meeting is, um, I'm just thinking a lot about what we have been told. Will happen or might happen with the new presidential administration. And without, you know, jumping to, to a place of fear. I think it's super important for our, each of the schools in our district and our district overall to assume. To, to understand, to learn from the mistakes that happened around the issues with the book, uh, the book and the police last year and really. Focus on having clear guidelines and protocol for what to do in situations that are currently happening in states like Texas and Florida. And, you know, uh, not assume that just because we're not those states, we won't be faced with these situations. Um, I think it's really important that we have clear guidelines for making sure we're not only saying that immigrant youth, trans and queer youth, students of color. That these students are safe. Um, we actually are putting into process preemptive policies and procedures so that we actually know what to do. If and when. Our students are, um, are, are facing situations that could be endangering to them, but that the, the adults in charge might not have thought through. And I'm really hopeful that we can be the adults that our youth need in this time and, and do the hard stuff before. We're confronted with those situations.
Yeah, Derek, just a little update. So Christopher attended a series of meetings. Uh, all our ES teachers are part of the, the, uh, the. No, BELT, not, not BASIC, right? But, but BELT is the, like, English language, Berkshire County English Language Teacher Group, and, and they're working with BASIC. And then separately, um, the, um, superintendent's group is hosting an additional webinar on, on Monday. The superintendents are going to connect it with the, the DESI, the Department of Elementary Secondary. And, and then on Wednesday. Um, there's, uh, a, another webinar for, for people, and I don't love the term, but in the trenches, right? For, for teachers. Professionals and, and custodians. Uh, it's, it's been shared with us by attorneys and, and all sorts of different guidance that, that. Um, before anybody is allowed into our schools, uh, for anything connected to this, they, they have to. Uh, I, I mean, this is the big learning from the book thing, right? That they have to have a warrant and, and we're gonna talk with, with our own attorneys. Uh, so that's, that's the first response, but, but there's, there's much more to that. Uh, and, and, and we'll know a lot more at, at the Monday webinar and then at the, at the Wednesday webinar.
That's great. I'm glad those things are happening. And just, just to, to further wrap up what some other high school parents have, uh, we've been talking about is that. Having that knowledge and that training, you know, with the top ten people who would potentially be faced with the decision. But also communicating it to the community so that we know our students are safe.
Yeah, no, I, I, and I, if I could have shared that information today, I would, but I don't have it all.
Okay.
So it, it, it'll be coming, uh, probably, it, it may take me a little bit to digest it, but probably Tuesday of next week.
Okay, thank you.
Basic is also giving families. Lists of documentation. They're, they're helping them create binders so they have all their information together. And they're doing the train, same kind of training to the immigrant families that will be having.
Okay, but, and, and thanks for bringing it up. It's important and, and it's on everybody's mind. Anyone else for public comment?
Hearing none, we are adjourned by unanimous consent.